I'd like to call the meeting to order if you can stand for the pledge, please. Can we also have a roll call?
Yes, I am.
Result of the Board of Education approved the agenda for the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three regular Board of Education meeting. Can I motion, please?
Move.
Tanya first, Stephanie Denise, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes eight zero. The Board would like to start this meeting off tonight with a statement to bring the community up to the same place we are. The Board of Education continues to take action steps and work diligently to follow the appropriate process, which is dictated by law, to bring this matter Superintendent Thompson to a resolution as soon as possible. We, as a board, will continue to communicate everything that we are legally able to share with the greater Ballensville community. We are committed to providing accurate information and updates, and will continue to demonstrate and ensure full transparency to our families and community members pertaining to this matter and all matters concerning the Ballensville Central School District. Under the direction of our legal counsel, the following actions have taken place. Investigations to the October seventh, two thousand twenty-two actions by Superintendent Thompson were conducted. Results of that investigation led to the Board taking action on the November tenth, two thousand twenty-two, on charges in connection with termination. Charges are filed in turn, set into motion the process of selecting a hearing officer to preside over the hearing. Once a hearing officer has been selected, a hearing date will be secured. We will continue to inform the community as we move through this process. We appreciate the support and patience so many of you have given us as we navigate this situation. Thank you. Moving on to the next part of the agenda is the Board of Education Spotlight. So we'll hand this over to Acting Superintendent DeRobery.
All right, thank you. I did see, I know I saw two, I think the third student arrived. So we're excited this evening to recognize and honor three Baker High School students for outstanding achievement and recognition. These students, three students, one senior and two eleventh graders, were selected as delegates of the two thousand twenty-three Angelo del Toro Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute, commonly known as Prili. They are representation of the Syracuse delegation. I do know, having attended last year's reception, that all three were also selected last year by the district and participated, and I know it was a worthwhile experience. This institute, which will be held in March in Albany, promotes the involvement of Hispanic and Latino students in public policy issues by having those students experience and learn the legislative process. Certainly, the delegates that are represented here for our district represent great leadership potential. And so we're excited to recognize and share in their success. So I'm going to call up the three students, and Board Member Germano is going to help me with handing out their certificates, and we'll have a photo. All right, so we'll start with the eleventh graders first, and I will first start with Sophia Beck. So Sophia. That's the hardest part, and I do know that Sarah would be very upset if we didn't get the certificates out.
We're gonna get them out. Congratulations.
We'll stay for a photo here with all three of you. Okay, next we have Isabella Clark. And last but certainly not least, our senior who also will be able and eligible to hopefully receive a scholarship as a senior, so fingers crossed for her, we have Sidney McKenny.
Joe, I just wanted to also add that OCMBOSIS that houses the Midstate Regional Bin Legal Education Resource Network will be hosting its annual gala for the delegates who represent the Syracuse delegation for the Puerto Rican Hispanic Youth Leadership Institute. It will be celebrating language, culture, and more importantly, our students and the families. So we're excited that this event will be happening on March tenth at the Doubletree Hotel Carrier Circle from five to nine P.M., so we're excited. So please look out for the invites, and congratulations, delegates.
Thank you for that information, Tanya. Next up on the agenda, we have the Correspondence Board Activities and Committee Reports. And on January fourth, we had a Special Board of Education meeting where we went right into executive session to discuss a personnel matter. And then on January fifth, we had lunch and learn with the superintendent.
Yes, so we had a productive lunch and learn, that was through Zoom again, this session. We focused on the budget process, transportation, and the proposed capital project, which will be presented with the annual budget in May. Our next lunch and learn is scheduled for April thirteenth, and that focus is on human resources, our school resource officer, special patrol officer program, and special education. So certainly encourage the community to attend those live and ask questions. We didn't get any questions this last time, but we know folks are checking the website and watching the videos review. So definitely a learning experience for everyone. So encourage people to take part in our lunch and learns.
Thank you. And then prior to the regular Board of Ed meeting tonight, we have an Audit Committee meeting.
Thank you. Very quickly, there is a new auditor, and Kim, please direct me as well as the rest of the Audit Committee. It's Dark Angelo and Company has begun the process of performing the district's risk assessment. There were meetings that were held on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two with district staff in order to obtain an understanding of existing processes and roles of key individuals. So today, we were introduced to Roy Chip Clark, as well as Zachary Woodard from Dark Angelo, who provided us a little bit of information about their firm. Additionally, we identified some risk assessment that will be conducted over the course of the next year. So the audit field work, which will be focused on payroll and, no, accounts payable and purchasing, will be conducted for the district for January thirtieth through February third. And there will also be an information technology business unit that will also be assessed sometime in mid-February of this year. We also want you to add.
So the IT assessment is going to be the first assessment we have in our IT. Typically, they don't do that right away because it's going to be fairly, I think they want to get in into the district first, and then they can start the IT assessment to see what's going on with basically our IT, and see how secure we are, where risks might lie, and how we correct those. They'll formulate an action plan, just as they will for all the other assessments. And as we have done as a district, we won't make any necessary changes. But other than that, I think Tanya's hit all the points, and I think things are going relatively well.
Overall, absolutely. And just in terms of transparency, their recommendations was either in that area or another, so we're going with their recommendation. About one hundred to about one hundred and twenty hours will be invested to provide that risk assessment to the community.
And we, excuse me, also quickly looked over the single audit report, and there are no issues found there. And we looked at the extracurricular report, a few minor things, and a corrective action plan that we will take action on the upcoming meeting, basic things with extracurriculars, Baker, use of gift cards, and also looking for inactive clubs, and taking care of those and tying up loose ends. And claims auditor, all of those reports have been going well, which we've been getting updated on. And then there was a discussion about state e-runs. Right now, we're anticipating possibly getting a little bump in aid, but that will be, see what happens later on as we get through that process, or Albany does, to make those decisions. And we also talked about the beginning stages of our reserves, what reserves we want to fund at the end of the year. And there'll be more information coming to us in Friday letters about that. One of the ones was the teacher retirement system reserve, also possibly starting another capital reserve because of our future capital projects and talks of upgrading the facilities. And also, the workers' comp reserve could be funded a little bit more, and some other ones. We'll see where we end up at the end of the year.
The only thing I wanted to add, and there was a discussion about how to present this information so it's more accessible to the public. You know, there's very knowledge about things like tax cap and tax levy, understanding those differences, and what the financial impact will be on the taxpayer as we move forward through this process. So if you do have, and this is to the community, if you have ideas about what that access looks like and what you would like to see in, you know, those types of presentations moving forward, and very visual myself, so, you know, we're having examples about what that could look like for homeowners and taxpayers. That's something we also discussed, being mindful of your needs as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else have anything they want to record on, any other activities or anything that they've attended school-related since the last meeting? Okay, on the agenda, we have a bunch of upcoming events, and everything's listed there that is board-related. It takes us to February first. And then also the instructional technology meetings, usually starting those tomorrow. And how many community members do you have on that? Ten? Excellent.
Tenish.
Good. Great, thank you. All right, next up on the report, or on the agenda, is the Student Board Report. So I'll hand this over to Hassan.
More for you all, this will be as hectic as ever, but. So just to start off, up at Baker, I'm sure most of you are aware that All County was this past Friday or Saturday. That's been kind of an exciting thing, something, fifth grade, fifth grade, I somehow was a part of All County. And I remember it then being exciting, so, I mean, it was exciting that we were part of that. Went well, and I know for a lot of my friends that are seniors as well, it was exciting. I was told that it went super well, and compares even to other years, and it was good for them because they're seniors. So, yeah. Community-wide dialogue, I mentioned another meeting, and you all, of course, know that is, but there is a meeting tomorrow, and if I'm not mistaken, that's at Baker. The pep band is doing their pep band things, and they were at, it was a little bit funny. They were at a basketball game over break. Exciting, as always. Moving on to the elementary schools, so at Van Bieren, Baker's robotics team had a group of students that were helping third graders out in assembling school machines with their baskets. And then to wrap up the, not the fundraiser, but like the winter co-drives and the food drives that they've been doing, they helped total of twenty-two families through their annual holiday gift drive. At Palmer, they have Alan Woodrow, who wrote the pep war, coming in for a, like, author visit thing. I can't really talk, say, for some reason, so, I don't know what's going on there. McNamara, they're having assemblies and in-person author visits. I went to McNamara, we always did assemblies, and when McNamara was here, it was exciting. We at least been here, and we're still doing those, because, I mean, they were always fun, so. They're also doing random acts of kindness over the next couple of weeks, writing kind post-it notes. At Eldon, their third-grade student council, in honor of National Cuddle Day, did a fundraiser, and all of the money that, for that went to helping out. I didn't know they had a third-grade council, but it sounds like Eldon kind of has a one-up on the rest of the elementary schools. At Jerky, there were thirty-six students who submitted artwork to the Scholastics Art Competition. I think thirty-six is a pretty big number, that seems like a lot of kids. And the stuff that they hang, that they hung in the walls of Jerky when I was there was good. And my ninth grade was only half of the year, so I'm only gonna imagine it's all gotten better. And there were twenty-nine students who were selected for the Junior High All County Festival, which will be January twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. I know it's kind of seems like the place that I want to be, I was talking about this earlier. They had a be healthy and a wellness club, they did yoga, meditation, dance, kitzumba, and pickleball. Their school motto is also be fit and don't sit. I mean, it sounds like they're having fun. At Ray, Mrs. Esthetics faxed class, we could use it, gave them the local firemen and policemen. And then I was also told that there's three students from the district that are moving on the next round of the spelling bee, one from Reynolds, Van Bieren, and one from Ray. And then back to Baker, Edge, Mrs. Sacco wanted to report out that scholarships are due on the twenty-fifth of January, and the January Baker student promotion is snowed in with Edge. Yep, I said it was hectic. That's that.
It was very comprehensive, that's what I would say. Well done, thank you. The next part of our meeting is public participation. And before we start that, I would like to make an apology to my board colleagues. Public expression at a board meeting is addressed in Board Policy fifteen-ten. When community members would like to address the board at a meeting, the rules and expectations are read prior to start a public comment. It's expected that all speakers follow these rules. This is not the case at the last meeting, and I'd like to apologize to my board colleagues for my inaction on December nineteenth. Speakers are not publicly to use employee names and positions, and it was my responsibility to interrupt the speaker, remind them of the rules, and I failed to do this. I assure you that this will not happen again when I'm sitting in this seat. While it's difficult for me, based on how I was raised to interrupt people, I do have the responsibility to ensure that the policies and rules of the board are followed. And I'm human, and I made a mistake, and I ask that you forgive me for this. This is my responsibility, and I'm sorry for falling short on that evening. Kim, do we have any requests to speak tonight?
Yes, we do.
Public comments are welcome. They're limited to three minutes per speaker, for a total of up to thirty minutes for all speakers combined. They should not include specific individuals or positions. Unless appropriate, the Board of Education will respond by letter to the individual's comment and question. Board members will not engage in conversation or comment during this period. Specific employee or student concerns should be communicated to Superintendent Schools during regular business hours. If there are more than five individuals speaking on the same issue, please limit the topic to just five speakers of your choice as a group. We are all here for our students, and it's expected that everyone speaking tonight will follow these rules, and everyone present will model the behaviors that are expected of the students in this school district. Kim?
Helen Shalat, in regards to recommendation.
I'll have to reword just a little bit because I have a position, but I'll do my best. Dear Board Members. I'm here reading this letter tonight as an active community member, taxpayer, parent of two adult children that have graduated from Baker, and most recently, a grandparent of a first grader here in the district. For the past thirty-seven years, we have called Ballensville our home. I'd like to add that I'm very proud of our community and our school district. There's leadership that we have now that's sitting among us tonight that has filled the role. Here in Ballensville today, it's been acted upon as graciously and professionalism as possible while carrying out, helping us carry out through this pandemic, and continuing to show outstanding leadership in this role. Conversations that I've had with many community members feel the same as me. They have voiced that they are proud of the leadership that has come forth during these challenging times and unprecedented times. Our leadership has always shown confidence, knowledge, and professionalism within our district and community. And I would hope that the leadership that we have going forward right now, today, that we look at, looking at the leadership that we have sitting amongst us today and tonight, and sitting here with us here at this table. So I ask the community membership that I, excuse me, I ask the community members that I speak with, that I spoke for, and myself, feel that we should look no further than looking at the leadership that we have presiding over us today for future, possible recognition and employment. I had to fill in a little bit because I had to do, so my apologies as far as rambling on. Kim, did you need a copy of this?
We're more than willing to take a copy of, so.
Okay, well, I'd have to adjust it if you need, because I.
If you want to do that, and.
Actually, you don't, you don't have to adjust it if it's coming to us.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
Yep, absolutely.
The next speaker is Pat Speech, Tammy Carante, and Carla Smith, in regards to recommendation.
Good evening. We're here to speak to tonight. Carla and I are co-Vice Presidents of our Ballensville Educational Support Professionals Association. Pat Speech, of course, is our president of our unit. We encompass many titles throughout the district, including clerical nurses, teachers aides, teachers assistants, land tax, and can have a wide perspective of the district. Many of our members have been here through many challenges created by previous leadership. And even though some of these challenges have caused upheaval for student staff in our community, the leadership of the district is making this steady course of action has led our district through these turbulent times. Through the leadership, the BeZma members have been able to create, concentrate on assisting our district and students to continue to be a safe and learning environment. Not only has the current leadership been there for current and not, I'm sorry, for academic and non-academic achievements, but also responsiveness during the global pandemic. Leadership is led by example. Through the current leadership collaboration with the Administrative Association, Teachers Association, Paraprofessional Association, BeZma, and CSEA, we were able to increase seat time for students during a time when other districts were not able to. During the current leadership, we have maintained a positive and professional presence in our schools and our Ballensville community. This was made possible by the current leadership. These are some of the reasons we feel we would like to urge the Board not to seek any interim leadership. We feel very strongly that any further disruption to the current leadership would not be advantageous.
Point of order, I just wonder, the reference to interim, I don't, I'm confused about the. I'm just wondering, by mentioning interim, does that not speak to itself about the leadership we're referring to? And I want to honor it, and I want to, you're entitled to, but I'm just wondering if that violates what the expectation is.
It doesn't, thank you.
With the current leadership, we are maintaining focus on instruction, safety, and communication. While we respect the responsibility of the Board of Ed and their decision for the leadership, we feel compelled as a unit within our district to share with the Board of Ed that the current leadership has been outstanding in keeping the Ballensville School District moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments tonight. Moving on to the next part of the agenda, the consent agenda. Result of the Board of Education approved the consent agenda pursuant to its attach. Can I motion, please? Shelley first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Next up on the agenda is the reports section.
First for the reports, we have Mike Tierney, our school transportation director, coming back for the second review of our proposed transportation budget. I do not believe there's been any changes to what was presented last time. And so we would open it up for questions from the Board, and have a chance to review that additional information. Follow-up questions for Mike, he's happy to take those at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Any questions regarding the proposed transportation budget?
I would say that you're so thorough the last time. As I say, I enjoy your presentations every year, it's incredibly detailed. And what I really appreciate is you anticipate the types of questions we're asking. Are you ready with examples in your presentation to help us better understand why things are happening, why there increases and stuff? I like the explanation of the whys.
Thank you, Jen.
Do nice job, thank you.
I just would reiterate that, thank you for, you know, for making everything so clear for us. It's so helpful to have that. Thank you to you and your department for everything you do. And I just want to take this time to thank everyone for their tremendous support that they showed, not only our department here in this building, but district-wide. It's very much appreciated by all of us. Thank you, everyone.
So next, we have the review of the proposed debt service and benefits budget. Again, I do not believe there were any changes, and Kim would be happy to take any questions if you have questions related to that presentation.
They don't know what I just said.
I was just gonna say the same thing, thank you, Kim.
There are no questions with that review, and then we'll move on to Chris Campbellita, Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health, and he will be presenting our first reading of the proposed athletics, physical education, friend-to-friend, and intramural budget.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight?
Press your mic.
Oh, geez, I apologize. How's everybody doing tonight? So I will, I'll walk you through this, not gonna hit every single item. Obviously, some of them are contractual increases. Some of the supplies are based off of pupils, so not gonna go over each and every one of the schools unless there is any type of question on that. The way I break it down is very similar to, as you'll see up here, with the non-instructional salaries. If you look at the second item. Just wait till it comes. Yes, the second item, instructional salaries, you'll see a little bump of an increase there. That is the salaries for my fall, winter, and spring coaches. We have put some fund balance in this account. In the event that we look to add, and it's not to say we're going to, but with recommendations from the state and our league, we are looking at the possibility of interest in flag football. New York, the NFL has partnered with our state association to look at flag football for girls and to see if there is an interest for that. They're also looking at possibility for girls wrestling. They did pilot that this year, right down the street in Fulton. They've got some female wrestlers that are participating, and they're just looking at numbers, what it would look like, and if it would be something that is feasible to participate in those two sports. We've also had interest in ice hockey for girls. The biggest thing that we want to do in making any type of decision like this is obviously want to make sure that it is in, with Title IX, to make sure that we have, it's even across the board, fair, equitable. across the board, fair, equitable for boys, girls, and the amount of teams we have, coaches that we have, to make sure that it's fair. We also want to make sure that, as a league, we want to make sure that we're committed to doing, you know, if we're gonna go in with flag football, we want to make sure that the other teams are, want to participate so that we can field a schedule. You know, those are some of the factors that we look into that. We put money just aside in the event that we look to offer any of these sports. And as I said, it's nothing that's permanent as of right now, but it's something that we are definitely going to look into, and we'll keep you posted on that as well. The next top, or the next title, the non-instructional salaries, are really contractual percentages that, as you can see, there's really not too much of a shift other than a percentage that gets increased. And then the next part with the equipment, as you've seen the last several years, we've really tried to upgrade our physical education equipment, weight room equipment. I think we've done a tremendous job of upgrading Ray, Dirky, Baker, Weight Room with new equipment. We're also still making sure that we have, you know, equipment available for our student athletes during the school day, PE classes, and obviously after school as well. The equipment for this, the next piece is just upgrading, you know, a couple items that I've talked with my coaches about, athletic trainers about, so we're just gonna kind of upgrade some of those. The next part of the contractual piece is really a big chunk of what I have as my budget. And you'll see that this covers the athletic officials referee contract that was renewed last year for a three-year contract. So we're able to kind of forecast what that would be budget for the next three years. Preventative maintenance for any of our weight room equipment. Contractual line also covers all the fees for all of our sports in terms of invitationals, competitions, bowling tournaments, track and field meets. We allow a certain amount of money for each sport to be able to participate in going to tournaments invites, and that's where this money will come out of. Also rentals, we also allow our athletes, if, for example, if it's raining for tennis and they can't get in, we have a certain amount of money that we'll give them so that they can go into an indoor facility. Golf is also another one that will use that, especially with the weather and the springtime, where they'll go to the Turning Stone, the golf dome, so that they can get some practice in. As you remember from last year, with our athletic trainer, we did add a .5, which has been tremendous. It's been great to have that coverage. It's ironic that both my trainer and the .5 were good friends growing up onto school together, so they get along great, communication's great with the staff, the coaches, my office, and it's been extremely helpful having her. So each year, we look to, you know, assess where we are, make decisions as it relates to what we need for our student athletes, but that has definitely been a huge help so that we have our, make sure our games are covered. The materials and supplies, as mentioned earlier, these are based off of pupil, so that's the amount of money that each school will get. They'll place their orders, we'll order, we'll quote it out, and make sure that they have that each and every day so that they can update their supplies for their students and their particular buildings. The one item that you'll see a jump from 100,000 to 133. Several years back, we did keep it at a minimal. We were up to about 115 in terms of supplies. That line item is the supplies for our fall, winter, and spring sports, any type of equipment that they need, from golf tees, uniforms, helmets, you name it, it's covered. In the last couple of years, and even this past year, obviously, a lot of these prices have jumped up. We are covered for this year, it's just moving forward, we're gonna have to make sure that we buffer monies available so that we have enough for those seasons. And also to keep in mind, if we were to add a sport, having some monies available to make sure that we can get that sport up and running. So that's where you'll see that jump. And then really after that, it's really, you know, our athletic award recognition that we have. At the end of each year, we do an athletic banquet. And then the last budget item is really a BOSI's piece with Schedule Galaxy and Huddle that we use in athletics. I believe that's... Yeah, I think that is... What is that? Is there any?
Oh, quick question.
Yes.
We've probably been told this, but I can't remember. Did we shift the stadium salary to another code?
Oh, yes.
So we did. We shifted instructional?
Yeah, the stadium salary went to, I've got a note here, it went into my coach's salary.
So under the instructional?
Correct, so it went from zero and then went into there.
Okay, that's what I thought, thank you.
Yep. And then the other zero that you'll see in materials and supplies, where it had co-curricular for Eldon, that used to be our monies for cross-country and outdoor track and field for the elementary races to give the kids after. So we put that money into the athletic award recognition, it was more fitting for that. Yep.
Hey, Chris. I'm very excited about the girl's sports.
Yeah, it's cool to talk about, for sure.
Yeah. Can you go back, I just want to make sure I heard you correctly, when you have the Eldon supplies and back there, all the elementary supplies?
Yep.
What is that based off of?
Pupil.
Pupil, okay. Thank you.
And it is, I mean, we're doing, the items that you get are pretty funny, and some of the elementaries, and when you're unpacking it, you're seeing, you know, rubber chickens and fish for the kids to be able to, you know, play with, and, but it's all those type of items. And even at the high school level, the archer unit, you know, so they're getting bows and things of that nature, tennis, rackets. Badminton, pickleball is a huge sport now that at Ray, Dirky, and Baker, they're really starting to use. But it's really to replenish the supplies that they need on a yearly basis, which is great. They've got a good eye for what's up and new and coming for them, so that's kind of where that money comes from.
Hey, Chris, how are you?
How are you?
Good. I am also, as Denise said, it's pretty excited about the potential of some of those girl's sports.
Sure.
I do have a teenage daughter, and her friends keep on asking me, is rugby, actually, is flag football, is hockey? I'm like, no. So the topic is very exciting.
Sure, absolutely.
Just a quick question on uniforms and equipment, and I think I've asked this maybe last year also. What's, how do you distinguish what teams or what athletic teams get in uniforms, get updated?
Yeah, absolutely. So I have a nice Excel document that every year we order uniforms, cloth, we call it, from varsity all the way down to modified. I will enter the amount, how many, and a year, just so that we have a base. Now, obviously, with swimming, crew, sports that you need to do on a yearly basis, that's gonna be ordered every single year. A quality uniform, varsity JV, should last between four to five years, depending on the durability of it, how much it's being used. I think our coaches have been very cognizant of what uniforms to purchase. Also, we're playing a lot of our games on turf fields, too, so you're not having that wear and tear. For your modified, it's, I don't want to say you're handing uniforms down, but some of the coaches will look to, you know, whether it's a JV, you know, a modified uniform to hand down to kind of, you know, extend the life of it. But at the modified level, those uniforms aren't too crazy to replace, and they're not as expensive, you know, it's a quality uniform. But it's really based off of our, my coaches meeting with the varsity coach at the each of, every season, we'll have a conversation, and supplies do come up. And we will look and track to see where they were the last time. You just don't want to get in the habit, it's expensive. You don't want to get in the habit of purchasing uniforms each and every year for those big marquees sports. But what I'm gathering from your JV varsity, a window between, you know, four to six years based off of use is kind of what we look at. And trying to think of, you know, that's, they'll give me some ideas, take deal, and that's kind of how we order them there.
Thank you for going over that again. And just to mention, with the additional part-time for the athletic trainer?
Yeah.
That was huge. I've heard from a lot of people that they were very busy between games and practices, so I'm glad to.
And the nice thing with that is you don't have to go out and get the per diem. You have that person there, and they work together as a team to fill out that schedule. And so it's kind of, that part is out of mind, you don't have to worry about it, it's scheduled, it's, you know, covered, and it's been definitely a nice addition, for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to expand on the athletic trainer component, Chris has been having that conversation with cabinet, and we're giving it one more year, one full year, to make a decision whether there would be an increase in that potential for a future budget based on the.
It's important, for sure. Time for Kelly?
Hi, Joe, good to see you.
Yeah.
Quick question, I know at the beginning of the year, we heard a lot about the referee shortages, and then I think they negotiated like higher pay, like how does that impact your budget, or is that somewhere else in the budget?
The budget is based off of, you know, so we're adding a percentage based off of what the language is with a contract that's signed. In the event of what you saw with hockey this past winter, we were able to, you know, a lot of it has to go with the section in terms of, you know, agreeing to the contract. People can agree, disagree with what it looks like. The nice thing is by buffering a set amount based off of percentages from the past, you're able to cover that piece and plan for what that looks like moving forward. An example for that, obviously, is the officials for ice hockey, but also with basketball, you can choose for varsity, boys and girls, to have a two-man crew or a three-man crew, and that rate is different based off of what you choose. So when they sign those contracts, the nice thing is it's here for three years. We can forecast what that budget turns out like for the next, you know, several years, and not have to worry about anyone holding out, so that's definitely one way we can buffer that. So we have enough monies in that account to cover those. Yes?
Hi, Chris.
Hey, Jorge. How are you?
Good. I just have a question about the adaptive physical education supplies.
Yes.
So let's stay constant, 230, 230, 230. So what, I guess there's so much volatility in prices, and I mean, how are we ensuring that that is going to be enough for all of the students we may have who need adaptive equipment?
Sure, so Dennis Wellman, our AP teacher, is really in charge of that. So he does, he does a great job of looking at what some of the PE teachers already currently have to be able to use. There will, you know, sometimes they'll have conversation, be able to double up on a supply, hey, if you're looking at using this, I can travel, you know, with these supplies so that I can at least cover what I need for APE. Say he was traveling from, you know, Eldon to Ray Middle School and needed that. So they are able to kind of work that piece out. And he has a great, you know, idea of what his kids need, and again, this is based off of each year they're going to, you know, replenish this. I do ask if there's ever an item that they really, really need or suppressing, you know, reach out to me, we can look to get it, we can put it on as, you know, a wish list item if needed. But that's one of the things I do stress in my department meetings, if it's something that you're really looking at, let me know what it looks like, we can look at possibly, you know, getting it. But at the same token, this is, these are the numbers that they do have to work with.
I would add to that, between the special education budget and the regular instructional budget, there is additional fund balance built into those budgets that we're not going to not purchase equipment that's needed for supporting our students. So there's flexibility, both within the athletic budget and the others, to make purchases of items that are needed for student engagement.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for explaining that, Joe, thank you for adding that. I just want to make sure that everybody out there watching is aware that we do have that extra flexibility, you know, if something is needed that our students aren't gonna go without, so.
Correct.
Any other questions for Chris? Chris will be back.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you very much. Good night.
So next, Kim is going to highlight the administrative budget.
So one of the things I will point out on this slide is the salaries are probably the larger portion of the increase here, and those are by contractual obligation. And we can look at the detail of that as we go through. On the next slide, a couple things I'd like to point out, as we are starting to build the budget that we're noticing, and Chris was here today, and his budget is proposed to go up about 12% between the 2223 budget number and the 2324 budget number. The administration budget that we're looking at tonight is about a 5% increase. Transportation at this point is a 12% increase. And our debt service also is going up a percentage, but that is a little more complicated because we had to move things from the technology line, which we haven't reviewed that budget yet, to the debt service because of GAZB 87. But my point of bringing this up tonight is that we're seeing increases throughout our budget. So one of the things that, you know, we have started talking to the board about, and we talked to the audit committee, or starting to talk to the board about, and we spoke to the audit committee tonight, was, you know, we are thinking that we're gonna have a foundation aid increase this year. There's more to come on that. Obviously, it's very preliminary at this point, but I just wanted to point out that another thing that we're doing throughout this budget process is definitely taking into account some of these additional costs that we were just talking about with Chris, and the cost of supplies, the cost of fuel, all of those things that we've been doing. So as those numbers come out, hopefully by the end of January, you know, there may be some additional conversations that we don't normally have with the board from our regular presentations, depending on what that aid looks like that comes in. I don't know if you're ready to touch on that.
Yeah, just to have a preview of what you'll see in the instructional budget. So some of the things that we're trying to embed in to help with, utilize some of the additional aid that we're anticipating are to embed a lot of the positions that we've been supporting through either title funding, the ARP funding, and/or other revenue sources that we, so for example, your, the school resource officers with the addition, the guidance counselors that have been placed in the elementary schools, the additional RTI staff and learning coaches. Because we were supporting those through the funding that we received from the federal government, we're looking to supplement that with the general fund as we move forward. So making sure that those are built in over time, and we figure that's a great way to utilize some of the additional aid that we may be getting from the state. And so that's why you're gonna see some significant changes in the instructional budget. Additionally, to help utilize some of that, those additional aid revenue sources, like some one, larger one-time expenses, like equipment for music, fine arts, those high-cost items, we're looking to build in. So that's a little bit of a preview for what you'll hear on our February presentation.
Just starting to digress a little bit, but we wanted to make sure that we've had that discussion prior to things being released from the state for the board. When we take a look at most of these salaries, things are pretty stable from last year. The one thing I will point out is if you look under the treasurer, we did hire a treasurer or title. If you remember, we had an accountant, too, that was working in the treasurer capacity enlisted as treasurer, and now we have the treasurer by civil service. So you'll see that flip there between the salaries treasurer and the salary clerical, so that we'll have one treasurer in that line, and then the other salary will move down to the clerical positions based on the transitions and the shifting that we've had in the business office. The salary clerical, under 14318350, that is the personnel. The salary clerical under 14318350, that is the personnel salary and HR. And we've had some transitions there and we're still building in either fund balance and/or the opportunity to have a little bit more training and transition going into next year. If you remember, we moved to an electronic platform for hiring staff and there's still more to be built there. So we wanted to make sure we had dollars there if we have the opportunity to have people be able to continue to build that program for us on that electronic platform. The other increases really, you know, contractual line has gone up a little bit for legal. That's just based on the usage. The insurance lines have gone up about 4% as well and those are just projected. Those are things that we never know about until after the budget is approved. Materials and supplies have stayed pretty stable for the most part. The postage print shop has gone up a little bit. I think we all know postage has gone up once again, so we are accounting for that. And then we get to our BOSI services, which really we are projecting most of those at a 4% increase. But these are only preliminary numbers. We do not actually get our final request back from BOSI until February to really know what those numbers are. So those may shift a little bit. The one I will point out is the top line, the 1310490 where it has finance and food service. That also includes that school front program that I was talking about, the electronic onboarding. And you will see an increase there as we are still implementing that and we're pushing that out to the rest of our staff. We started it with instructional staff and now we are pushing it out and had just bought a half a year of licenses this year for the rest of support staff so that we're all utilizing that platform. Any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. So I believe next we have the leadership report and I will be quick. Just wanted to follow up with where we stand currently with the strategic plan development. As you know, the strategic plan is really the focus in bringing life to our district mission, vision, core beliefs. And that plan is created and constructed to really drive our thinking, our decision-making as school board, leaders, staff members and students. The strategic planning committee met just prior to the December break. We received the feedback from the community perception survey that was conducted this fall by RMS. And so we took time really going through that document. We continue to go through that document. But what we have started to do is to take the feedback and the analysis, both qualitative and quantitative, from the findings and break down into priorities or high-level areas of focus as we start to develop this plan. So kind of creating this framework. We actually had our second meeting today. We have 10 more meetings scheduled twice a month between now and the end of the school year with the hope of having a final document sent prior to certain components for feedback to our school community. But a final product for the Board of Education consider at the end of the school year in June. But we're, it's an exciting process. I think folks today and certainly the board members that were there, feel free to chime in. It's exciting because you're really thinking about what's next for us and what's really going to drive the way that we think and do things from the feedback that we receive from the community. But it's also frustrating and hectic at the same time because you're trying to condense and put all of this great data into a plan for moving forward. So exciting, but frustrating at the same time and a lot of work ahead. So our group was pretty productive today and we're, you know, brainstorming some of those high-level themes and we've gone through a couple of iterations. We're trying to utilize technology and some other engagement strategies to keep people focused and directed. And we'll keep providing you with updates as we move forward between now and when we hopefully have something to present.
I wouldn't say it's frustrating.
It's a good frustration.
Yeah, it was, there is a lot of information in a lot of different themes and combinations of major points that we could focus. I know it'd definitely be interesting to see where we end up at the end.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is board roundtable. Just want to give you guys a reminder, in the December 23rd Friday letter, there was a section about the Board of Education page. If you want to add any input, there is a link in there to get to a document and that input's due by January 20th. Just a reminder, this is a lot of craziness before the holidays, just to circle back to that. But the link is in the December 23rd. It takes you to the hidden page right now that we're working on and a document to contribute, the same one that we started earlier in the year with throwing around some ideas. And that's due the 20th. Then we also have our January 30th data retreat that we're trying to prepare for. So to help Danielle and Joe and the rest of the curriculum department, what types of data? We talked about, we usually have our academic quarterly reports. We usually have our year-end report, which we actually didn't get this year from last school year. We also have the equity report that was done in the quarterly report the last time. So just to give them some direction, because there's a lot of data. I mean, we have quarterly reports, we have TASS, we have BIMAS, we have discipline, we have absenteeism. There's a lot of different things. So just kind of throw off some ideas to give them some direction of what we may want that evening to look like. I can say probably the easy, one of the things that would be helpful, at least to me, is seeing some trends because we have this pandemic in there. What were things looking like prior to maybe, you know, five years to where we are now? It's a possibility, you know, the big takeaways, the positives and the negatives, areas that we need to focus on, areas that, you know, are really strong or we just may want to lift a little bit, or just some of the ideas that I'm thinking about.
I kind of agree with what you were saying, just absenteeism and discipline and all those kinds of things. Just to see, because I know when kids came back, there was a little bit of a transition period to at least see if those things have kind of improved and gotten closer to where we were before the pandemic and I kind of think so.
So I'm going to add to that. I think it would be great to see what you were saying, Jen, some of the positive areas and then some of the areas where we may need some work. And I'd love to see kind of like the next step, because I know that's not our role, but the action plan. How you would take that data and then how would you put that into action? And then where would we come in? Where would we, would we be helping with funding or that type of thing?
I'm saying, everyone else has just spoken out. And I don't know if I'm getting too specific, but not so much it's a positive area, but room for growth. Students who are struggling academically can that be tied to kinds of type of services they may or may not have received. See what they, to Denise's point, what action steps might possibly be able or in place or may need to be in place to link those to, to make sure that the kids or students are getting what they need if they continue to show growth or areas that need growth.
And we don't really know where we ended up last year. At the VR meeting, there was like a one-slide presentation. I'm not sure if the data wasn't released yet. And it was going to be in a future Friday letter, which it was. But I think we need to like formalize, have more of a formalized presentation of where our students ended up last year. So we know what we'll be looking at, you know, when you guys do that, you know, next year. Whether that's in summer or the fall, whenever that information's released. So we have, you know, baseline, you know, maybe creep back a few years, like I said, you know, pre-pandemic, how are we doing? I know it's different cohorts of students, but are we, you know, studying out? Was there a lot of fluctuation? Are we upswing? Those trends are very, very important because a lot of things happen at times, maybe on the pinpoint reasons why or, you know, some pitfalls and ways to improve or hey, we're doing fantastic. Let's keep doing what we're doing.
Last time Danielle presented just the chronic absenteeism report and I thought it was very valuable for us just to look at that one piece. So maybe we can discuss breaking down the presentations and looking at one section at a time. Maybe it would be more valuable for us to just develop that information. I also thought that looking forward, after I've looked at some of the information and looking at our board goals, how can we take the information that we're given, all the data, and how does that coincide with the board goals that we're working on? So that we can work with the district together to, you know, meet our goals and their goals are being met. We have goals, so many different goals that so many different stakeholders are working on. And how can we take, look at that data and somehow work together so that we are, you know, all working towards the same goal?
So are you talking about, like, we get a lot of presentations with the BIMAS stuff, you know, the MTSS and connecting that to the academics because we have all that work going on in different buildings or? I'm not sure. I'm trying to understand because there's so much information. Because that's one of the things that I was thinking about, you know, we say that once we meet the students' needs, we're going to, you know, see an increase in academic performance, you know, hopefully. And I'm not sure if you guys are even to the point after all these years, even being able to make that connection yet. So that's, that's not a conversation for today, but I was just, you know, wondering because it is such a big focus in a lot of the presentations.
I'm wondering though to Sam's point, the idea of breaking it down, because we don't have so much time on the retreat, at the retreat, that we may not be able to get through everything. So do we want to focus on, if we're looking at the end of the year results, a lot of that focus on the secondary level, you know, where we ended with regions? We do have historical data that goes back. Maybe we break it down from that academic perspective for this meeting. And then, you know, look back at five years, where we were with regions, where we were with the three threat assessments. Not that that's the end, I'll be honest, because we don't know where things are going. But at least we have data that can help guide us with, you know, where we were pre-pandemic and post-pandemic. And we know how it connects to the student course averages for the data that we reported out last year quarterly to the board. So if you maybe give us some of that guidance to say, okay, we're going to focus in on the academic. I know people want to hear about discipline and absenteeism. I already talked a little bit about the chronic absenteeism. Is it, does it make more sense to chunk this over time?
I think we absolutely, we only got what, three hours scheduled? Is it two or three?
Uh, between two and three.
Let's say it's two or three. I mean, we could spend an hour probably on discipline and, you know, an hour on curriculum stuff. So I think we should pick a couple of topics and really focus on those instead of just getting dumped a bunch of data and not quite understanding how to use it. But that would be my preference. And then that may give us an idea for the next data retreat and then we pick a couple more topics.
Here's a question. That absenteeism report that we got last year, do we get that, refresh my memory, do we get that a few times a year? Because if we do, then maybe that's, you know, we don't even look at that.
Right. We do and we update that on the dashboard every time we do a dashboard presentation. So that you will get again. So, you know, if I were to make a recommendation, I would say we've talked about that. You've got some ideas. Let's focus in, like you said, if we want to do discipline and we want to do the academic data that we have, we can trend back in both those areas, pre and post-pandemic.
Joe, if we are trending back, something that I would like to see, and again, I don't necessarily think it has to be at this retreat, maybe in a future retreat, like Jeff was saying, is if we're trending back, can you, as an ancillary issue, can you show if there's any trends as terms of staffing, you know, in between post and pre-pand, pre, pre and post pandemic, excuse me? But I think that'll be beneficial to see if there are any issues and if there's any ways, you know, we all, I think, are looking for ways to support and to assist and I think that might be one quantifiable, tangible way that we can, if we can see those trends.
We can definitely on the side, between Human Resources and Renee and Tony from the curriculum department, at least when we've hired and made shifts, we should be able to identify going back where we've added positions, the reasons why we added those positions.
Or lost positions.
Or lost positions, yeah.
Something that tops of my mind is every, you know, we're always talking about, I think it's nationwide really is the loss of, you know, we, I know in this district, we've lost a lot of good educators, good, you know, assistants, good staff. And if there is any correlation there, how we can.
So, yeah, so you just brought up a good point because I was thinking differently than you were. I was thinking, did we lose positions, not necessarily personnel? So you're referencing.
He's talking more attrition.
High-quality teachers, attrition that have left, right.
Across the board though, and if there's any correlation between pre and post pandemic and, you know, you may not be able to really conclude at the end of the day that one has a relation to the other, but it might be nice to see those numbers as well.
We can, we have some data on that.
So we're going to do both, the attrition and the positions. I can't remember, wasn't it a few years ago, was it during this pandemic?
We put together a chart that gave us, the board asked about how many positions we added or decreased over time. But we can take a closer look between now and then of key personnel that have been in the system for a while, where we've had a change in hiring with new staff coming on board. Not that that means that new staff are less qualified or committed to providing high-quality instruction. It just, it could be one more thing that is weighed in on, you know, the outcomes of the student performance. But we can look at all that, yeah. So am I hearing correctly, the academic piece, we can pull some of those ancillary and then discipline? If those become the two focus areas for at least this data retreat, knowing that you'll get an update on a kind of chronic absenteeism and attendance moving forward at the quarterly dashboard reports?
Yeah, the only suggestion, I'm sorry, and I think that was mentioned in the previous meeting, is your data process. You know, the review of data, what does that look like? Also, just perhaps because there are new board members, just a summary of accountability, what that means within the greater context of our role and responsibility and understanding because there's been some changes.
Yep, and there will continue to be changes.
Absolutely. So an update, even if 20 minutes, about what that looks like.
So maybe we'll start with that piece and then go into the academic or discipline, depending on, you know, working with a team, which one would be easier to get with, easier to get through first. We'll start and then build, knowing that one of them could bleed over into another retreat at a later point.
One question. The equity report that we got last, are you planning on doing that quarterly, just with a different focus? I'm not sure what the plan is with those reports.
So we have that report. I guess that's under, you know, kind of your advisement. It is a lot of work to do that. So whether we do that annually, I don't know if we have the ability to do that every single quarterly report because it is a lot. If you think about what we pulled last, that was from the entire school year. So maybe when we do a report moving forward, if the board's okay with that, on an annual basis, we do the equity update because we'll have all the data and can break it down from there. It's just complex to try to build that system at this point in time. And I'm looking at Danielle. She's the guru of that.
And one more thing, we're calling this a retreat that's technically a work session.
It's a work session.
Right. So that's going to be open, so to the public. So it's just going to be like this, it'll be recorded because we're talking about actual dates.
be recorded, because we're talking about actual data and, you know, asking questions about actual data, we're not learning how to use the table.
So it'll be a data retreat, but it is a board work session.
Right.
So it is public, yeah.
And it will be available online?
It'll be available.
Like a board meeting kind of thing?
Yep.
Just more informal.
Any other thoughts or?
Any others?
Yes.
Anything else for Joe for the data retreat workshop or session?
Again, we'll do our, we'll do our best and if there needs, if there's further questions to come out of the workshop, we will certainly do whatever we can and try to get you the information and make adjustments. Yeah.
Joe, I have one. I have one question. Going back to the strategic plan, do you have the results of the survey? Is that something that's available to the public or to the board?
So we are still waiting on the final, we asked RMS to send us all of the comments and they're being scrubbed right now. So we anticipate that being released, I would say, they told me right before the holidays it'd be about a month to do that work. We're hoping that it's available for our next meeting, which is on the, no, 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 the next strategic plan meeting, which is the Tuesday, the 24th, yes, you're right, correct. And so if we get that at that point in time, we can put it on the week, in the weekly letter and then we can decide, you know, how that gets communicated on our website with the greater community.
Thank you.
Yep.
So we all set with the data presentation work session? Keeping and changing all these words. Does anyone have anything else for roundtable?
I had a topic I suggested when in the Friday letter, I was having a conversation with some board members from another district, this one happened to be Liverpool, and I don't remember exactly how the topic came up, but they were talking about, they have a, they've had a policy in place since '06 in Liverpool about providing board members, not only current ones, but former board members with the ability to hand their own children their, or stepchildren or grandchildren their diplomas at graduation, so. Thought that was a great idea, there's not a lot of benefits that come with this job. Actually, I don't know if any benefits come from this job other than a personal gratification, so I thought this was a nice, nice thing they do for the board members in Liverpool. It's on the screen, I know it was supplied in the Friday letter for everybody to have a chance to read through. Wanted to bring this and propose this to the board to see if there's some interest in this. I thank you for bringing it up and I did, we did discuss it before and I'd certainly be in favor of some sort of policy like that for our current and former board members. I'd be in favor.
Joe, can I ask you a question about logistics? So, so the day of graduation, you know, principal works on that and other staff members? So how would that impact the DO or the staff members who are putting that event into fruition?
We would just, I believe if we're mirroring that policy, there's a deadline that the former board member or incoming board member would have to at least notify. And we're going to assume that every current board member is going to be potentially added, especially if their child is graduating. But anybody that's not a current or board member, they would notify the district office and then we would just make sure that arrangements are made for, you know, when that student is moving through the presentation of the diploma, that they would, you know, be given directions to move to the, to the stage area and then they'd be standing there where they would come up on stage close to that timeframe. I don't think it would be that complicated, I mean, I think it would be pretty, I guess, simple for the administration in both district and building to kind of work through that process. But I wouldn't envision it happening just like that. They wait near the portion of the stage, they come up on stage a few students before and then when it was time, just like our current board members do, they'd get up and get the diploma from the principal and hand it to the student.
I think a good example, I think, was last year, we actually had a principal who handed their child.
Oh, we did.
And I don't think most people noticed any disruption in the thing. So we had, and then we had at least one board member who handed their child their diploma. So.
Right.
I think at those low numbers, it's.
It's certainly a little bit easier than how it used to be done.
Yeah, where we were jumping in.
Rotating, right, right.
No, I agree. I mean, I'm thinking at any given year, we're talking about, you can count them on one hand, how many taxis there are, so I don't think it's.
How was it done? You made reference to how it was done in previous years, how was it then?
So in previous years, board members would split up all of the graduates and it would be, you know, the high school principal would not hand the student's diploma, it would be board members doing that.
Yeah, just to follow up, prior to COVID, basically, it was all done by the board. And we would just go through the list and basically break it into nine sections, if you will, and you get the As and Bs, and then we'd hand them all out. And then if somebody on the board knew a family friend or something like that, you'd jump in and compared to what we do now, it was a little bit chaotic, but it worked at the time, but I think we got a much better process now. So this is simply just limiting it to children, grandchildren and stepchildren and board members.
And there were a few hiccups at the time too, where, you know, our diploma, there was some, you know, shuffling around and adjustments that needed to be made, not every year, but a few years. And I will say, the one piece of feedback we have received, and that's no discredit to any board member, most students know the high school principal. And so for them to get that diploma from a high school principal or a board member that obviously is son or daughter, I think that is a huge positive shift that we've made over the last couple of years. So that's also.
Completely agree. And I think this, this allows for the families of board members to decide, you know, do you want the principal to do it or do you want me to do it? So I think, you know, this isn't mandating that any of that, so. But, yeah, based on how it is now versus, I would definitely not advocate to go back to the way we did it before, pre-pandemic, but.
I would be in support of this. Thank you, Jeff, for bringing it up. I just wanted to say, Jeff, thank you for bringing it up. And at first I was like, oh, that's a great idea. And the more I thought about it, I'm not really in favor of it. You mentioned something as a benefit to be a board member. To me, I'm a board member because I volunteer in this position for all students. And I just feel that we shouldn't, I personally shouldn't be afforded anything extra because I am a board member. Appreciate you bringing it up, but I don't think I can support that.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate all inputs and keep them coming. I think when Jen and I talked, if there's support for this, enough support, then we can bring it to a vote or we can propose it for the next agenda and these go through two reviews, so plenty of other time to provide your inputs and then we can vote on it and see what, where the board stands. I think I propose we put it on the agenda for next meeting. Write inputs.
So I struggle with this one too, for similar reasons. I thought it was an interesting idea first, but then thinking about, you know, in this thing that we did, you know, we opted not to support, you know, payment. I know this is like a nice perk, you know, I learned about it informally, you know, at the gate of a football game, that board members aren't charged, but I can tell you that I've never been comfortable with that and I've always handed over my admission fee. You know, I probably wouldn't do this, but that's just me personally, because it's just my personality. I'm not sure how I would vote, but I don't oppose it, going to a first reading and having more time to think about it. It's just, you know, it's a policy just specifically, we're setting policies aboard just for board members and I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community who'd like to give their diplomas to their own children for whatever reason. So I struggle with this one, especially, you know, some of our students who have incredible challenges and going through, their parents were the primary support to get them there. So I don't oppose putting it up for first reading, but I can say personally, I'm not sure where I personally stand on this one yet.
I'd like to clarify, I didn't mean that I opposed for it to be up for reading, so I might have jumped the gun on that.
So is there anyone who does not want to see this go up for first reading? So we'll skip the buy, skip the policy committee, it'll go right to a first reading at the next board meeting and it'll be a standalone because we don't have any policies to put forward because we didn't, yeah, so we don't have a policy meeting until February 13th. So it'll be standalone first reading and then second meeting, the meeting after that. Is anyone who opposes that? Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for the next board meeting for first reading. Does anyone have anything else for roundtable?
Just a comment. I know it's difficult as adults to publicly own your, your mistakes. It's not easy to do that in spaces, often in spaces that we work in, we live in. Sometimes we're not afforded the, the spaces to do that. And so to Jen, I really appreciate, it was kind of unexpected for you to put on the table owning what you did during the open comment. I know it must have not been easy and I appreciate that because we want to model what we expect, you know, for all our students here in this district. And I just want to say I appreciate that.
I appreciate your recognition of that because it wasn't easy. People aren't perfect and people make mistakes and I think the hardest thing is, you know, you can admit yourself, but it's just, you know, I reflected on that a lot over the break and I definitely felt like I didn't do my job and I hold myself to a very high level and I very difficult on myself in every aspect of my life, so I really appreciate you for stating that. Does anyone have anything else for roundtable? Okay. I'll move on to next section, executive session. Result that the Board of Education entered the executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Taylor Law to discuss the best contract in the employment history of a particular person or corporation, or the medical, financial or credit history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Can I motion please? Jeff first, second, Shelley, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, passes nine zero. We can meet in the other room, I want to take about five minutes.